No, that's okay. That's okay.
Greckin?
They didn't pull up most.
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Janer?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Justice for all.
Mary Day?
Now I'm gonna think about it every time. Can I somewhat look off your agenda with you? My computer died again, so...
We have a proclamation today that reads, whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with unalienable rights to freedom, and the 13th amendment was added to the Constitution making slavery illegal.
That's fine.
And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problems of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. Now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the city of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the city council to hereby acknowledge January as slavery and human trafficking awareness and prevention month, and encourage our citizens to become more familiar with the problem and to work towards solutions.
I would like, I would like to say a couple of things. I belong to the Coalition Against Human Trafficking, which is a volunteer group here in town, and we work toward abolishing all forms of human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration with other organizations. And a couple of facts that were not listed in the proclamation, as Mayor Scott Reddwire, that an estimated 40 million victims of modern-day slavery worldwide are trafficked. Of these 25 million are victims of labor and sex trafficking, and another 5.1 and 1/2 million are people trapped in forced marriages. Nearly 30 of all victims are men and boys, and that increases to 46% for victims of forced labor. Individuals in situations of forced migration, refugees and unaccompanied children are particularly vulnerable in labor and sex trafficking issues. And it's calculated that a $1.50 billion industry is the modern-day slavery that has become the fastest-growing source of illicit profit for criminals worldwide. Two events that the Coalition is involved in is we collaborate with Junior League here in the community to do training for hotels and motels to recognize and understand the problem of trafficking within the hotel motel business. And in April, excuse me, we are offering a conference addressing the issues of pornography and its impact on the individuals, the families, and our society. And this conference will be held at the Convention Center on April 25th and 27th and is open to all. So, human trafficking is a crime against humanity, and we need to unite our efforts to free victims and to stop this crime that has become ever more aggressive and threatens not just individuals, but the foundation of our society. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll go to the consent agenda today. That's items 2 through 13B. Consider them to pass unanimously. If you want to speak on an agenda item, please come up as I read it. Be sure and state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizens Concerns. Again, please state your name and address. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. 2 is a reading of the city council minutes of January 13th and 16th, 2020. 3 is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of January 14th. 4 is a resolution appointing a commissioner to the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority Board of Commissioners. Do we have to name that, or is it in the memo?
In the resolution, it's proposing to appoint Janor-
Okay. 5 are resolutions adopting construction documents for the Myrtle Street Reconstruction Project. 6 is a motion approving a grant agreement with the Iowa Campus Compact to support a summer intern position. 7 is a resolution proposing to sell property at 2001 Center Street. The petitioner is Kelly Construction. 8 are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving the contract with Sioux City Engineering for the Glynn Avenue Reconstruction Project. B is a resolution approving a contract for transportation with the city of North Sioux City, South Dakota. C is a resolution approving a First Amendment to Development Agreement with Beth Bruning. D is a resolution authorizing a 20AD Agreement for Medical Emergency Response Services with Dakota Valley Emergency Services. E is 413 Pier Street LLC Agreements. A is, or 1 is a resolution approving an intercreditor and subordination agreement with First National Bank of Omaha and 413 Pier Street. 2 is a resolution approving a foreclosure rights agreement with First National Bank of Omaha, Avalia Bank, and 413 Pier Street. 3 is a resolution approving a consent agreement for the redevelopment of property at 413 Pier Street. 9 are actions authorizing issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing payment to H.R. Green for the Outer Drive North and Floyd Boulevard Trail Connection Project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Mark Albanicious for the Jones Street Public Improvements Project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Sioux Contractors for the Fire Station 1 Kitchen Remodeling Project. D is a resolution authorizing payment to HydroClean for the Annual Manhole Rehabilitation Project. 10 are appointments to boards and commissions. Items 10, A, B, and C are motions to appointing Bruce Kalin, Rick Bertrand, and Brian Crichton to the Building and Housing Code Board. Item 10D is a motion appointing Lawrence Obermeyer to the Historic Preservation Commission. Items 10E and F are motions appointing Sam Avery and Alexia Boggs to the Parking, Skywalks System Board of Trustees. Items 10G, H, and I are motions appointing Matt Larson, Brian O'Hara, and Barb Ann Hookeluk to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. 11 is purchasing. A is awarding a purchase order to Hyman for the EMS Personal Protective Equipment and Boots. B is a resolution awarding purchase orders to Sandy Fire Supply for EMS Excrepation Gloves and Turnout Gear. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order of Allegiant Emergency for EMS MSA Karn's Traditional Helm. 12 are approved total payments issued for reporting period of December 2019. 13, receipt a minute to see the list. Come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll vote electronically. Passes 5-0. 14 is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of the alley near 815 Hamilton Boulevard. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. The hearing is open. Does anyone want to be heard on that? Go ahead, Mr. Gary.
Jason Gary, Chair Planning and Zoning. Fairly simple cleanup request for this alley to be vacated for future, for the site to be futurely developed.
Anyone else be heard? Hearing is closed. Call the roar or let's vote electronically.
Voting panels, yes.
Did mine take? Still blinking.
Yes, yours did. There we go.
Passes 5-0. Anyone opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
Move that. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
I'll move second, third. Second. Passes 5-0. 15 is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan at 1310 West Third Street. The petitioner is Arch Icon Development. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item. I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone want to speak? Please come forward. Go ahead, Mr. Gary.
This is a site plan review on a redevelopment infill site, and they had come forward once. We reviewed it. Now it's back again to be re-reviewed, that was re-reviewed by us, and then re-reviewed by you.
Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development, 509 Walker, Woodbine, Iowa, here to answer any questions the council may have about the development.
Could I have you move the microphone?
Oh.
So it's aimed at you?
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry, for people listening.
Would you like me to repeat that?
Please.
Sure. Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development, 509 Walker, Woodbine, Iowa, here to answer any questions the council may have on the proposed development.
Questions? Might have some, if some of the neighbors have a concern, but right now I think we're okay. Thank you.
The parking, I was curious about, and I know it says in the RCA that there will be additional space next door-
Yes.
-at the Everett Apartments?
Yes.
But is that because they have apartments that are vacant now and haven't been filled, or they just have extra ones that will always be available?
They're just a lot of ex, there's 47 stalls at the Everett School. We've taken photos at different times. We have a max of 10 at any given time that are used, so there's plenty of extra space. We will own both developments so we can share with ourselves, basically.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone to be heard? Hearing is closed.
I just had one quick question that was about this, and my computer died, so my notes died with it. Was this one where they were exploring the detention underneath or underground? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. So the site plan didn't meet the code on its face, so there's a number of issues, and one of those was, was the water retention, which was an issue we weren't willing to waive.
Yeah.
And that, but essentially, they, they are working on a plan to meet our code with underground water detention.
And so they will come back with that, or it's just contingent upon, or?
As I remember it, this plan is subject to them satisfying the city's water retention requirements. If they don't do that, they would probably have to come back through the process-
Yes.
-to tell us why they won't meet it.
Yes, okay. That's, I want to make sure. Thank you.
Vote electronically, please. I have a conflict of interest, so I'll abstain on this item. Passes 4-0 to 1, Mr. Moore abstains. Is there anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that. Second.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
I'll move second, third. Second.
Hold on one moment, please. There you go. Sorry.
Thank you. Passes 4-0 to 1, Mr. Moore abstains. Boy Scouts, where are you from? Sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier. Come on up the microphone. Tell us where you're from, guys.
They're like, "Do I have to?"
Hi, we're from Troop 225.
Where's that from?
It's over by Modern Day.
Modern Day? Out there in Morningside, huh?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks for coming today, okay?
Okay.
All right. I hope you get a merit badge for that, because you haven't put up with a lot of stuff today, so.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to come up and give your input later, feel free, okay?
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you. 16 is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of West 22nd Street. The petitioner's Andy Anderson. P&amp;Z recommends approval. Still have to move that. Might have a conflict.
I'll move it. And can we pull this up at all? Is that possible? Do it. Yeah. Again, sorry, my laptop died.
Can we second it, please? Second.
If that's possible.
The hearing is now open. Mr. Gary?
Yeah, we reviewed this vacation request by one of the adjacent owners for this piece of land. We heard the item, and we voted in favor to vacate.
Go ahead.
My name's John Heinz. I'm an attorney at the Curry Huff Law Firm here in town. I'm here on behalf of Lena Slovacek, who's the other adjacent property owner. Mr. Anderson was the petitioner. Ms. Slovacek couldn't be here tonight. She's 92 years old, but she and her husband Walter have been neighbors to this property since at least 1965, and actually from 1965 until 2013, they mowed this lawn. But Ms. Slovacek does support the vacation, provided that she gets to purchase half adjacent to her property, which we understand is the city's general practice. And I don't know if there are any other questions. I know this came with recommendation of planning and zoning, and there were some concerns about access to the Heartland Church's adjacent property. I've looked at this, and I think that it doesn't seriously inconvenience the public to vacate this right away, and that the church would still have reasonable access from the south. I know it's not the most convenient access comparatively, but I think that the vacation is, is the best way to move forward.
Questions?
Can staff talk a little bit about their concerns? I mean...
Chris Mattson, Senior Planner. We did receive a written response from the church to the west concerned about accessing this portion of their property. We did provide this map at the Plan Zoning Commission. Essentially, the church's property is shown in red. The yellow is the different accesses they do have to the property. However, this portion here, the green is the requested vacation. There's about a 20-foot elevation change at this point, so all the other accesses, they still would not be able to access this portion because of that elevation change here. And it did sound like there was some interest in doing some construction in this area per their written response. But the Plan Zoning Commission did state that they could work between the two parties to provide an easement. I did talk to the petitioner after the meeting. He said he would be willing to grant an easement. I don't know if the two parties have communicated since then.
Can you speak to that?
So I don't know if there's been any discussion of easement with Mrs. Slovacek. My understanding of this property is it's, right now, just trees. And any sort of hypothetical future development's going to have to be basically a complete clear out. It's going to require excavation. From that standpoint, while, I'll concede that the access from the east is the most convenient access. If you're going to have to completely redevelop that section anyway, the access to the south is still convenient, which is the standard of the vacation, is that it's not a, a change, it doesn't create an inconvenient access. It's still reasonable. It's convenient. And given that there, no development has happened, I think it's hard to predict what kind of access it might look like in the future.
I'm gonna have to abstain because I'm a member of the church, but I will say this. When the trees fell on the guy's fence, we would have never been able to get there to take them off for him.
Was that Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I don't know if there's anybody here to speak for Mr. Anderson today.
And so...
I take your point.
I don't want, I don't want, I don't want the neighbors to think the church is going to run down there and take trees off, because it's going to be impossible to do that, just so you guys know.
It's, it's a good point. But I think the standard of, of the vacation allows for this, and that would be Mrs. Slovacek's position, so thank you.
I don't know, it's...
How would there be access then to the property if you had to?
You have to go, it's very hard to come this way. So you've got to come up Collins Street, or you've got to ask this church to allow you to come across, which is still a big grade change, significant grade change from the church down below. But, I mean, four-wheel drives, you can get there, but...
So, from the Plan Zoning Commission perspective, when we had discussion about this particular item, the key question that we usually wrestle with in this situation is, is there any other form of access that the property owner can use to access a property other than this one? So we've granted, in the past, we've looked at neighbors who want access off an alley that they've never used, but it is convenient to get in their backyard, but it's not regularly used to get in their backyard. And so the question is, what does the city need with this land? We don't need it. You're not, no one's using it regularly, and you can access your own backyard from your front yard. We don't need this access in order to access your land, for sure. In this situation, we looked at the same kind of standard, and basically, I think the, the thought is, they, if they need to access down there, it's not utterly impossible for them to access if they want to develop it. And since there was no one there to speak to the issue, and since one of the homeowners that asked for the vacation and owned the property for a long time, and that, and other than the tree issue, that the church had never accessed that, that side of their property through this before, the issue was, let this, let them work this out privately in an easement, rather than the city owning and maintaining the land, which we're not doing anyways. So that was our line.
But just as a point of clarification, once you vacate, there's no obligation to do it.
There, you're right. There is no obligation for easement.
That's moot today.
Well, but it's, the question is, it's for them to solve, not for us. And could there be an agreement? Yes. Could there not? Yes. But that's, the question is, do we need the land? We really don't.
So does the church have a right to buy any of that, or do you have to be adjacent the other way?
Only the property owners to the north and south that are adjacent could purchase half.
Why is that? I mean, that's just the code or the way it's done, right?
That's our policy. I don't know what portion the church would be able to buy, but yeah, typically, it's the adjacent.
Because it's almost like, if you had approached the church and say, would you be willing, could the church buy enough to make access? You know what I mean? Or drive right through of what that easement would be, or what?
Can't imagine what that portion would look like that would grant them access.
Yeah.
Because it's a pretty narrow strip, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because they're, they would split it east and west, right?
Yeah.
They'd have the right to, yes. Yeah.
The property owners, I mean.
Yeah. Essentially, what would happen is, is that, is that each adjacent owner would have, have their opportunity to buy their half. If one doesn't, the other could potentially buy it. But no, the church would not have an equal right to purchase any portion of this. If they did, it would only be a portion of it anyways, so they would just move the line a little further to the, to the east.
So do both the north and the south neighbors want to buy half?
Yeah. So, based upon the, the person who requested the vacation who's on that northern half, he's the one who filed the petition, came and spoke, and why he wanted it, and then this gentleman who spoke on behalf of his clients, they're testifying about the southern half, that they would like it.
Okay.
So we've got two owners that, that want the, the space.
Okay. Thanks for bringing me up to date.
And no one from the church was able to be at that meeting nor this?
No, just, just, just the written request and to look at the issue of access to their, to their portion, but no one attended at the meeting and spoke up, and I don't, I don't know if there's anybody here today.
Jason, haven't we had situations like this before, though, where we waited until the parties could work out an easement?
Um, I-
Once we vacate?
That would probably be more of a staff question. Once we, once we rule on the vacation. I think we've encouraged people to look at easements, but I don't know if we've held off and waited until somebody came to an easement agreement.
Or even made it subject to an easement.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the last time we-
I thought we did that in-
I don't remember the last time we did that, so I'm going to defer to staff on that one.
Yeah. I thought we did that in Morningside, where there was a controversy about-
Yeah.
-the use of the land.
I know there was another one recently on the west side of town.
I know it was problematic, because they're granting an easement on property they didn't own yet, and we didn't want to sell it until the easement was in place. It was kind of a timing issue, but I do believe that was all essentially filed with the Recorder's Office about the same time. So we have done it in the past.
But the easement agreement was worked out prior to the vacation.
Correct. And when the sale, I believe, I wasn't involved in that one, but I believe when the sales were recorded, the easement was immediately recorded afterwards. They granted both sides access.
That's what we probably should be looking at, don't you think?
I don't know, but I mean, I just look at it, too, that it's like if they were serious about developing and needing that access, and I understand Jason's point, too, that if they're really going to develop that and excavate that entire site, then access from the south would be maybe possible. I don't think it'd be easy necessarily either way, but the other thing that I, I, because if there are complaints or concerns and people want that, usually I'm going to tend to agree with them, you know what I mean, and not vacate. But it speaks a lot to me, or says a lot to me, when, if they weren't able to make that hearing, and they weren't able to be here today, or at least someone, someone to come forward and say, "We are really serious about this," or "It is in future plans, and we really would oppose that," and ask the council. I guess that's just where I'm at, and speaks a lot.
I would tend to think that it would be appropriate to wait and give the opportunity to either agree or disagree with an easement, instead of trying to accomplish something afterwards. Maybe if a deferral of a week or two makes difference.
Well, you're still passive.
Yeah, still-
Because you, and just don't do second and third, if that's what you-
Oh, exactly. Exactly.
You wouldn't necessarily defer it, I don't think. I'm not-
Okay.
I do know that the petitioner was not able to be here tonight either.
One of the considerations for the council, too, is whether or not, as Mr. Gary had stated, whether or not it's used for transportation. The question is whether or not an easement is essentially circumventing the access point. I mean, are we vacating because it's no longer needed or not? So that's the standard that the council needs to weigh in making that determination.
Difficulty there is you don't know what the future development of the property would be.
Exactly.
So an easement might be ideal. On the other hand, you might want a public right-of-way.
Access, yeah, exactly.
How wide is it?
60 feet.
I was just figuring out if the garage would take up so much that it wouldn't be, if they both built garages.
We haven't seen a plan yet, so I don't know how large, where you're planning to put it.
Yep, great.
Is that what they-
Might be tough to do an easement if both of them are going to build a garage, is all I'm saying.
We got, yeah, so the petitioner-
They may have to, between the two.
Yeah, the petitioner stated, the petitioner on the northern end who filed the petition said that the reason he wanted access to it was, number one, he's maintaining it in the first place. And the second thing was, is that he was looking to add on a garage. The key question there is, is that for an easement, we don't need a city road size. An easement might be much less than that, and could they essentially work around it and sort it out privately among themselves? But the question, what we asked was, again, are we going to build a street through there? Probably not.
Yeah.
And I doubt the southern neighbors are going to be building anything at the age of 92.
Probably not.
But-
Well, but if the future, oh, yeah.
But the future, they could.
Seems like those kind of details should be worked out.
You guys called a make.
Right?
We make recommendations.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hey, you made your vote, right? You, you had your vote, man.
The question is-
I used that same line for years, too. We're just recommending a body.
License. We want to develop it further. Please keep it open.
And if we do the first today, I, I want to send a clear message that it'd be subject to the negotiations of an easement.
I think, I think, yeah, you could move forward with first reading today, and then reach out and find out how serious the church really is. That's the first question. Are they really serious about it? Is this an inconvenience, or is this a real objection?
And find out from the applicant.
Yeah.
Petitioner, whether they, how they feel about it, because we don't know that either.
We just have his verbal understanding that he's willing to work out an agreement. So-
But, and that was my point, right, is that this came before you-
Yeah.
And now it's before us.
Yeah.
And I haven't been contacted about the property, about any future development or plans, or any of the big objections. You can look in the audience today and say, if people are passionate about something, or really want something, they're going to make sure their voice is heard, and I didn't, I didn't hear that urging in this case.
My, and this is my opinion, not the, not the, my guess is it would be an inconvenience. It, it would be nice for them to have access. Is it absolutely necessary? I'm not sure that it's absolutely necessary, but they haven't come forward to state that. So, yeah, I, I agree, but it's, you guys called a make.
Yeah.
And is it possible that their access is just as much as someone being able to walk through there?
Well, for legal purposes, they would need the right to cross over through an easement.
But it wouldn't have to be, it could be just a walking-
It could be a walking path, just something simple like that. We do that for Mid-American and other people all the time.
I've got some easements, too, for farming, and it doesn't have to be a road, nothing built, just access.
Hey, if we need to get back there, and we need to cut down a tree, you're going to let us get back there.
So they should be able to work that out pretty easily without a-
Well, we would, if we've got willing partners, I would assume we could.
Well, I'm okay with the first reading, and then, would you be able to reach out to the parties involved and find out what each is, each- and find out what each is, each interest is in the property and then?
Reach out to the petitioner. I know he has been attempting to make contact with the church.
Did you say you have been?
I have been. I just know he was not able to be here tonight, so that he would be able to attend the next meeting and give an update.
Okay.
And it's similar to what we've done before. This isn't out of the ordinary.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of the ordinary. I just, you know, it's, it's, I don't think you're, you're violating any sort of precedent or anything like that. It's just a key question of, are they here? Are they objecting in person? Let's sort this out. Step in the other room, let's get this sorted out and let's do everything together.
Exactly. First reading only? First reading only? Okay.
Why not?
And then you'll follow up, please?
Yes.
Passes four zero to one, I abstain. Number seventeen, it's a hearing in ordinance pre-zoning four zero zero one and four zero zero three Military Road. The petitioner is Al Fagan. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move to defer this item till February 10th, 2020.
Second.
And you may vote on your panels for the deferral also.
Passes five zero eighteen, it's a resolution approving the final plot of Dogwood addition. The petitioner is Al Fagan. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move to defer this item until February 10th, 2020.
Second.
Passes five zero nineteen, it's a hearing and resolution, accepting the proposal of Telco Triad for land.
I just thank Jason.
For land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and authorizing a development agreement was deferred from December 9th, 2019. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's open. Anyone want to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty, it's a hearing in ordinance vacating a portion of the East West Alley and a portion of the Raw Street near 1603 West Highland Avenue. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Anyone want to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move that.
Second.
Zach Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Second.
Passes five zero twenty-one, it's a resolution proposing to grant a temporary easement near 1603 West Highland Avenue. Petitioners Chris Aguiel. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero twenty-two, it's an ordinance adding a new chapter, employee residence requirements to the municipal code. I'll move first reading.
Second.
Give him a chance. Can you give him? You're going to speak, it's open.
Zach Lewis, on behalf of the Sioux City Police Officers Association. We appreciate you looking into expanding to across state lines of 10 miles. Like we spoke in the past, we would encourage the expansion to 20 miles in all directions. That would get the, from the current city limits, up north of Lamar's and the surrounding area. Again, on behalf of the Sioux City Police Officers Association, that would be our recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so can we talk about what is the changes then? What are we voting on?
10 miles.
Mayor and Council of the current.
Iowa, South Dakota.
The current residency requirement limits employees to living within 10 miles of the corporate limits of Sioux City inside the state of Iowa. This change allows residency outside of the state of Iowa and Nebraska, basically Nebraska, South Dakota. State law a few years ago changed to allow municipal employees to live outside the state of Iowa. However, it required that an ordinance be passed by council. In the past, it's been set by resolution. So what this does is it broadens the residency requirement and applies to state law.
But it sticks to the 10 miles?
Staff recommendation at this point is 10 miles. Just from a standpoint of, we understand the need and the concerns about expanding the job applicant pool. We feel 10 miles is sufficient to start. It can always be revisited later.
And my question was, and I should have followed up with an email. So when you're doing the outline or the boundary of the city itself, is that where that line starts? And then it's 10 miles from that line?
Yes.
In any direction?
Yes.
Do we know where that reaches? I mean, to Zach's point, as far as with Lamar's and everything like that of what's? I'm trying to think of like, well, where, how far into South Dakota, how far into Nebraska does that really reach? You know, what does that radius?
I think Zach can share that with you. He's got it on us.
Yeah, and we do develop a map. I believe in the case of 10 miles, it gets you almost Elk Point in, in South Dakota. I don't know how far north it gets you in Iowa. I assume roughly Merrill.
Yeah, from the current, currently it gets just south of Merrill, the 10 miles. The 20 miles from essentially C-80 gets north of Lamar's to, they have a development, golf course development, I believe, up there, and it gets past that, as the crow flies.
That's the 20?
That's the 20.
And what's the 10?
The 10 is just south of Merrill. That's what it currently is.
Because I'm trying to think of who would be in that, you know what I mean? Or where the population centers are. Are you just getting more fields? Or are you getting, you know what I mean?
Probably the biggest impact would be South Sioux City, Dakota Dune.
Yeah.
Jefferson, Iowa would probably be, no, Hinton's already inside.
Well, it won't affect anything Iowa side.
Well, just a very little bit, yeah.
No, it shouldn't. It shouldn't affect anything.
You're right.
Yeah, for Iowa, it would be if the, currently it would stand as it is now. With the 20 mile expansion, it would get more communities. Essentially Lamar's is the biggest community that it would encompass with the 20 mile range.
And is that the biggest concern of your officer? I mean, is that what you hear and you think would get the biggest bang, right? Like, I'm trying to, trying to gauge, I, I think the city manager brings up a good point of a more tiered approach, or, you know, try this and see what happens. I understand that. But I mean, you hear it from officers or people applying, and I, I watch the applications. I know how they've went down. But I'm thinking, does Lamar's get you that much or over into South Sioux and the Dunes? I mean, that's, that's a lot of addition. And so I would think there would be a lot more people able and hopefully willing to apply.
Well, yeah, and the, basically what we're hoping to accomplish is that officers that are currently certified in another jurisdiction would be willing to apply with Sioux City, hire by Sioux City.
Yeah.
But the fact is that they have kids in a school district and public safety makes a lot of sacrifices already for, their families have to sacrifice. And uprooting a school district is a huge deal. So if they were allowed to stay wherever they live, we feel that it'd be, from the associate's standpoint, we feel that the applicant pool would greatly increase. I don't, I can't sit here and tell you that we're going to go from the current 50 to 2,000, but.
Yeah, I understand.
Anything that we can.
But that's an argument for me that, that would be the opposite, because then we're going to be accused of stealing, which we already get accused of, stealing officers from other communities after they've invested the money in them. So that, that argument for me is counterproductive, because I don't think we ought to be out stealing other people's officers. I really don't, so.
I understand.
And from my perspective, it's, I'm thinking if people are looking to move here, you know what I mean? And they want to be in a certain school district or a certain community or something like that.
Yep.
Gives them a little more flexibility of where they would choose to buy a home, build a home. But I do think the mayor brings up a good point.
So for now, you're good with the 10 miles?
No, their recommendation is the 20.
Our recommendation is 20, but obviously.
Just in Iowa?
What's that?
Just in Iowa?
No, the, that's currently, we're currently, if the recommendation from the council is full 360 across states, we support any change that gets us across the 10 li, the 10 miles across all three states. Obviously, we would prefer the 20, but anything that can help us out with recruiting, the association's on for.
Okay.
I, I have had conversations with Zach about this issue in the past. And so I weigh in on this, and you know, again, publicly where I'm at. I appreciate the concern about the pool of applicants and, and wanting to be able to hire the best available officer at the time when there is a vacancy. I think that's a good argument. I understand that. I also understand, I think your argument about keeping family together probably means more to me than the applicant pool. I'm, I'm hopeful that if the applicant pool is down, and I know it's down, I can remember the 400 applicant pools from years past. But maybe we can work on a new plan to broaden our, our area of recruiting. But here's the key element for me, and that's the critical part of it, especially for public safety. I know the, the city code talks about all city employees are critical. But in my mind, public safety is absolutely critical. And if a major event happens, criminal or man-made, and we need to respond, I want that response to be as quick as possible and as, so that we can respond and do what we need to do to keep the community safe. The farther out we get, the more I worry about how hard it will be to get people in and to respond. And, and I think most people in public safety know that there's no better time to respond than almost instantaneously after an incident happens. The quicker you're there, the quicker you can resolve issues, the quicker you can calm the issues, the quicker you have people to investigate and, and to reach a solution. I, I just think it's absolutely necessary that, that our employees remain critical. And 10 miles, I'm, I'm fine with. 20, I think, stretches the limit. So I'm, I, I'll vote for the 10 mile residency requirement, but certainly not because I don't have a strong feeling about the work that you do and, and how well you do it. I just want to be able to keep that standard there and to know that when the need arises, you're going to be on the scene quickly.
Yeah, you're not going to get any argument. I could, if you want to, I could argue with you. But, yeah, the, like I said, and I guess in our opinion, the 10 to 20 isn't a catastrophic change in time. But like I said, we've had extensive conversations, so.
Sure.
Beating that dead horse, so.
Yeah, you might not change his mind, I don't think.
It seems to me though, it's something we should revisit on a regular basis. If we do the 10 miles, maybe the 20 miles is more in line with what's needed.
Yeah, like Mr. Padmore said, if, if 10 miles now and if we can revisit it later on the road, or we need to revisit it. I said, you have our recommendation. I said, we support, we appreciate the 10 miles across state lines. And if you have any.
We'll just see. See how it impacts.
Just to clarify something though, do, is it 10 or 20 for all three states, or could you do?
I wouldn't recommend, I would recommend you be consistent.
But you have to be.
Yeah, I, I don't think you have to be, but I would recommend you do be consistent. The Iowa requirement, I, I wasn't here then, but the Iowa requirement I think was set by state law. I'm not sure why they would have set Iowa only if it hadn't have been state law. I'm guessing they probably would have allowed into South Dakota or Nebraska anyways. But I think if you start setting different mileage distances, you open yourself up to possible criticism.
It was through civil service was the administrative code that it was, you had to be a resident of the state of Iowa. And so when they changed the Iowa code, it was administrative code that they changed that allowed living outside the states. In most other states, obviously Nebraska being, there's a lot of public safety in Omaha that live across, and they've been, they've always had that. And so it's just kind of getting with the times of, I believe it was 16 is when they changed the state law, so.
And so the, the requirement to live within a certain distance really is the individual governmental entity's decision to make.
Yeah, that's how the state code is written, that you no longer have to live in the state, but individual entities can set residency restrictions.
Yes.
I'm about to speak well beyond my knowledge base, but I know there was some litigation back in 97 related to distances. And so I think you, you might run afoul of people if you started saying that all employees are critical, but you can live 20 miles in Iowa, but only 10 miles in South Dakota. Because it really is based on the distance.
Yeah, some other jurisdictions have gone to a response time. And obviously, coming from straight down Highway 75 versus coming from Allen, Nebraska, your distance could be the same, but your response time is drastically different.
Could there be a limit on our percentage of positions offered?
No.
That's, we can't have a balance that says.
It's almost like favoritism.
I can't speak in any of the, from the association's standpoint.
No.
I wonder if Council Bluffs allows you to live in Omaha? Just out of curiosity.
I believe they recently changed their.
They have a joint test down there now, right? The list is the same in Omaha and Council Bluffs to hire a fireman, I think, and, and policeman, right?
That I can't, I know that they changed their residency restrictions after this changed.
Bellevue, all, Ralston, Papillion, all of them have one master test. They draw off their list.
Nebraska's always been that way for public safety. They do one test for basically the state. But like I said, when it changed, since Omaha was already living in Iowa, I think Council Bluffs fairly quickly changed their residency requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Eric Starlin, E-R-I-C-S-T-A-R-L-A-N. I live at 2529 South Martha Street. And I can probably answer some of your questions. I didn't get his name, the officer. I could probably answer some of your questions, Zach. Council Bluffs, they just recently opened up their residency requirements. They do a time, it's 60 minutes in any direction.
How many minutes?
60 an hour.
60?
It used to be, I want to say, previously it was 45 minutes, so a half an hour, but in the county. So in Potawatomi County, and you had to be on the Iowa side, obviously. But they just opened it up. It's now an hour in any direction, any state. So I guess the trend across the nation currently, they are loosening.
Expanding a little bit.
They are loosening them up, so.
Because I was actually thinking that down in Omaha, I was thinking, gosh, 10 miles coming from Omaha, you know, I mean, Westo or something like that, and going to CB would be way different than Lamar's to Sioux City or something.
In Omaha itself, they, they don't even have residency requirements. And I know, like Gretkin was saying, you know, if you need that response, but Omaha being the city, as large as they are, that wouldn't be a requirement for them, you know, or that wouldn't be an issue. They would easily get the requirements for their response. But Omaha, they have no residency requirements. Bellevue, Papillion, Lincoln, I've applied everywhere. I'm here in the city now as a fireman. So I know that they don't have, but speaking on the Iowa side, I know that Ames, Iowa is a half hour in any direction. They operate out of three stations, so they're significantly smaller community. They have more, I guess, loose residency requirements. Des Moines, Iowa, a little larger. Their residency requirements, I believe, are an hour in any direction.
But it's to the main station too. It's not to the city limits, if you check, I think.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what it is. Like I said, I've seen that it's an hour in any direction.
The current code that's published for Council Bluffs online, they may have had an update recently, but it isn't on their municipal code as of yet. Basically says that the city's department shall assess the needs and demands of their department and shall establish a time and distance policy for the employees. That's how it's currently wired.
So it's a time, not residency, or a time not.
Time and, time and distance policy, but I don't, I don't have copies of the policy through their municipal code.
Yeah, I guess to speak on Council Bluffs also, I know they have a lot of teams. They have water rescue. They have the weapons of mass destruction team now also. So as far as response, again, Gretkin, I can appreciate and definitely agree with you on what you said about being ready for when that response needs to come in. But Council Bluffs, smaller community, they have similar teams, possibly even more teams than we do here in Sioux City. So and again, I don't know about the police force, what the trend is like nationwide there, but I know on the fire side, a lot of them are loosening up their restrictions as far as their residency requirements. And can speak on morale also, around the firehouse, a lot of guys are there for, I mean, I can't say that, but putting that out there that we are. It will increase morale as well.
With the ability to live across state lines, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just, just opening up, getting that hiring pool up and up also, and just giving people the other option to, you know, have residency elsewhere, move where they would like to.
Stretching it to twenty?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm for that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
That's all I had to say, guys. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Ready to vote?
We did.
Oh, I'm sorry, passes five zero. Anybody opposed, waiving statutory rule? Move that.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second and third.
Second.
I got on the wrong one again. I'm sorry. Here, I'll call it.
Okay.
On the second and third. Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chainer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye. And I guess, Zach, I would just say one last thing to, to vocalize my opinion. I would hope that, and the city manager, I would hope that this would return, you know, if problems can continue, you know what I mean? Or you continue to run into those things. I can't guarantee that myself or anyone else up here will still be on the council at that time. But I would, I would hope that they would be open to looking into that as well.
Appreciate it. Twenty-three is a resolution approving a pre-construction agreement with I D O T for the reconfiguration of the Iowa twelve Riverside Boulevard to three-lane roadway deferred from January sixth, two thousand twenty. Move it.
Second.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director, we got Deacon Schultz with the Iowa D O T. With Iowa D O T. Basically, we gave a present, they, they gave a presentation last time. We'd be open to questions. I did want to put out that D O T is open to, if they convert it to three lane, to reevaluating it in twenty-four months, looking at crash, you know, that we are getting the crash rate reduction that they anticipate. And if there's a significant, any op deficiencies, you know.
The numbers that the D O T threw out and then the numbers that the police department brought me were like dramatically different. In that timeframe, we were talking, the police department reported like a hundred and seventy-one accidents.
The, the crash rate is per hundred million vehicle miles traveled. That's the number they use. The, the, I think it was four hundred and sixteen. That's, since there, you don't have a hundred and vehi- a hundred million vehicle miles traveled in each year on the roadway. That's why the number, it, it's, it's a crash rate. That makes everything apples to apple, so you can compare one road to another road. That's how it's, it's measured.
Because you can't go just by a year or amount of months, because you're not going to have the same amount of vehicles.
Well, it would have been nice to know.
Well, I think it was.
It was on a memo.
We, we referenced it always as a hundred vehicle, the crash rate, not the number of.
I understand that, but for those of us that are not engineers like you, David, we don't know what that means. We're assuming there were four hundred and some accidents on that road.
Yeah, well, I think it was discussed that in the, about the hundred vehi- hundred million vehicle miles traveled.
I, I, I get that, Dave. It's, it's like you don't need a stoplight till two thousand forty, but let's put one up today and let, if you want it. When you're an engineer, you don't talk language that people like I am used to.
I think it was just a little convoluted, but I think you mentioned it at the last meeting. But that's where I, I agree with you that.
I think you mentioned it at probably your engineering meeting, because I've never heard.
Oh, that could be too. I'm not sure. I just, now I understand, and I understand where the mayor was coming from as far as looking at those numbers and whether the police chief or the police force saw that number of accidents. I think it's because they were looking at the different timing of that.
Yep, and, and we had a discussion with P D about, they were, they had looked at Hamilton and Floyd. And, and actually, you know, and saying, yeah, it's significantly less than those two roadways. But you take the, the length of the roadways and the amount of vehicles on each of those roadways. And actually, even though Floyd has more crashes, their crash rate is lower because they have more traffic and a longer distance. And, and it's, so they're closer to the hundred million vehicle miles traveled every year than Riverside Boulevard is. So it's, they do that so you're not ending up with these crash rates that are in like point something, something that makes it hard to, they try to get into numbers that are round numbers.
And truly comparable.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyone want to be heard in the audience? Keep in mind, we're going to try to do three minutes here, if it's okay. Anyone want to be heard?
You'll notice the shirt she's wearing. She's trying to get my vote.
Of course, the one I know on the council.
Yeah.
My name's Norma May. I live on Riverside Boulevard, nineteen twenty-three. I've lived there for forty years. I started through the, and they made the first change from two lane to four lane, which was a good thing, because there is a lot of traffic, you know, maybe not compared to other streets, but there is a lot of traffic. My biggest concern is the fact that my house is across the street from the Dollar Store. If I'm coming down that center lane to turn into my driveway, the driveway across the way is the Dollar Store. So rather than side-by-side vehicles, I'm going to be head-on vehicles, and that scares me. The other concern is if you make the sides for, for cyclists, already our trucks and cars drive too fast. I'm out there at least every hour and a half. I have a dog that has to go ten thousand times. And I'm really concerned that's not enough room for a cyclist if a truck comes by there at forty miles an hour.
I mean, hopefully the three lane should slow traffic. That's one of the benefits of a three lane is it's traffic calming. You're, you, I mean, in any two-way lane, two-way left turn lane, there is that issue of offset driveways.
Because, Norma, are they offset or are they directly across from each other?
We're directly across from each other.
Oh, then that, you shouldn't have that, you should.
And that is a good thing, then, when you have that two-way, because then you're both going. If the driveways are offset, then one's trying to go farther and one's trying to go the other way.
The Dollar Store does have three driveways. However, they like the one across from my driveway because it's flatter.
Yeah, and so that, that actually should be okay, then. You know what I mean? It's the other ones where it would be a challenge.
The other ones won't bother me at all. It's when I come from the south, from the interstate, and I'm trying to turn into mine. Right now, like I say, we're usually like this, and, you know, one of us has to give, fine and dandy. I don't care.
Well, no, because you both will be turning. It's just like at my house, you know what I mean? When I go down onto transit, if I'm turning, there is, sometimes you meet a car and you're both going the other direction. And that's, that's fine. You're both coming to a stop in the middle. You make your turns once it's clear. But yeah, I have that same situation.
I'm just concerned about the head-on, and if, if they think that center lane is to drive in for a while before they turn and not paying attention, that concerns me.
Yeah. Which, which it would be illegal. I understand, I understand, but I understand the concern. I do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Norma.
I think, is someone else going to address that?
They believe that, I was just checking that there's a state code that prohibits, but we're not sure what the distance is off top.
Prohibits too much.
That you can't, you can't drive down the.
But how do you know that? I, I struggle with that when I go to my mother's house off Stone Avenue, turning on Royce. Cars are turning. The, the turn arrow is pretty much the whole way. But I, you know, is that for the driveway to the church? Is that for the driveway to the apartments? Is that for the driveway for the house? The public is ill-informed as to when does that, when do I get over in that lane?
Well, I.
The shortest distance possible is really what the answer is, to leave, drive that lane. You shouldn't be driving down that lane for three hundred feet to.
Well, then you should break it and not have it go, why do we have it go the whole distance then? You know what I'm saying? If I'm not supposed to drive in that to turn on Royce Street, then there, there should be a break there.
Well, what I would think is then.
Or it should be marked like with double yellow, I mean, with yellow paint, so that I'm not doing that. Because I pull over in that lane, to tell you the truth. I pull over in that lane about three quarters of the way up to Royce Street, because nobody should be coming down that, because there's no place to turn.
Left.
But anyway, I, I just don't understand.
My worry, then, is if you would want the double yellow, then if there was a new driveway or a new anything, you'd have to re-stripe.
Yeah, and I mean.
But we'll wear it off around here, because we paint, well, the snowplow takes it off by spring anyway. We know everybody, the city paints in the spring, so they've actually got it for school, but what the heck?
If the mayor goes the shortest distance to turn, I'll be going around him because I'll think he's not going to, he's not going to turn, and let's, let's keep rolling.
He doesn't have a signal.
So, but then it's like we're saying that our citizens aren't smart enough to drive on three-lane roads.
No, I'm telling you that we don't know how to use three lanes, because we built medians in this whole town.
No, we got a whole memo about different roads that are three lanes.
Those problems, whether we like them or not.
France has got three lanes.
Yeah, I, I drive on.
Hi, I'm, excuse me.
No, you're good.
Rick Myers. I'm the board president at the Sioux City Community Theater, fourteen oh one Riverside Boulevard.
Yeah.
This may very well work in other areas, but I have some, some concerns and some safety concerns. Because we have, we're not like an ordinary business where we have just a little bit of traffic off and on during the day. Ours are mostly in the evening, except in the summertime when we have youth camp, and then we have a lot of traffic. But when we have our shows, our productions, then we can have up to two hundred and fifty cars leaving all at once. And if they are trying to pull out of our driveways and cross that, that turning lane along with flowing traffic each way and everybody trying to get out at once, I'm afraid we're going to have some problems. I don't know if the city's willing to send traffic officers out to direct traffic when we have shows. But we have three weekends for our big musicals in the summertime. And that, which brings me to the construction part of it. We have big shows going on. We have a lot of things that, where we have, like this summer, we have a big musical going on. We got the same thing, where we have a lot of vehicles leaving at the same time and drifting in within a half-hour time period. During the construction, how is that going to work and work safely to where we can, oops, we can all leave and get out of there safely and, and not have a big traffic jam that's going to mess everything up?
Well, I can address the construction issue very easy. I mean, it's going to be melanoma, so, yeah, at some evenings, your, your road may be milled up. And then it's going to be rough driving to get out on, but it will be open every evening. There's not going to be, except, I don't think we have any sewer construction that's right in front of the theater, so you're not going to be disrupted by that. So the work's only going to go on during the day. In the evening, it'll be open, full traffic.
That's good.
So you won't have an issue during construction. Uh, or shouldn't. As far as getting in and out after the three lane, I mean, if we can look at some of the other ones we have around town, Sergeant Road through Lakeport Commons, lots of turning traffic. It, it's operating in front of the schools, yes. There's delays getting in and out of North Middle School, but it's a three-lane in front of North Middle School. Those are high predominant turning, you know, come in and go out at the same time areas that it does function. That other projects the D O T has done, that type of on-demand user like you that's going to have all of its vehicles coming at once and all of its vehicles leaving at once.
Well, and then we have, like in the summertime, again, when we have the, the park is right down the road. We have the swimming pool right down, and then our Sunday matinees or matinee shows, where we have all that kind of traffic going at once and congestion. I'm just very, very concerned that I don't want any accidents. I don't want to lose any patrons or patron business even for the course of the summer or even long-term.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Denise Bailey, Billy Boy Drive-Thru. My concern is if a train is going behind our building, it's going to block off your access to Military Road and Highway twelve. If you only have one lane, right now, when you have two lanes and say an Everest train comes through, they can last fifteen to twenty minutes, which will back two lanes up all the way past the Dollar Store. If you only have one lane, that's going to double the length of how long you're backed up for. So if you're sitting in my parking lot and you just got burgers to take home to your family, you could be thirty minutes waiting to get out into traffic to get home, and by that time, your food's cold. Or you can't turn into my business, because the line of traffic is blocking you from getting in or out. And I'm thinking, like the one lady brought up before, if you just put a turn signal on West Nineteenth and a turn signal at War Eagle Drive and leave it as a four lane, that should accomplish most of the problems.
What is your address again? I'm sorry.
Twenty-three, twenty-eight Riverside Boulevard, and I also own the home at twenty-three, twenty-four, where I grew up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Do any of you want to address the turn lanes? I mean, I know we've gotten a memo talking about some of them.
As far as the traffic signals, the only way to do with a four lane and not having a dedicated turn lane is a split phase. And the split phase would, you know, like I've told people before, traffic signal timing is like a pie. You can only cut the pie so many ways. So the only way to take a turning signal at an area where you don't have a dedicated turn lane is to take through traffic time away. And that's what we'd end up doing, and it's significantly taking it away because of the way you'd have to time. I mean, we have, on northbound Riverside at Military, there's one, but that's because there's not an opposing southbound left turn lane, because that traffic goes down Sioux River Road and make turns on the. Opposing left-turning movement. We're both at West Nineteenth and slash Paul. You would have, you would want to have opposing left turns. And you, and what would happen if you had a phase where you allow just the opposing left turns to go? If someone who is traveling straight got in that lane, they'd be stuck, and anyone behind them who wanted to turn left would not be able to use that protected left turn phase. So the only way to do it is have a split phasing where you allow the northbound traffic all to go and then the southbound traffic all to go. And that would be the same thing at War Eagle and Riverside, because both the left-turning movement from northbound Riverside into the park and the southbound into the, are, are heavy movements at times.
Keith Baker, Sioux City, Iowa, twenty-one oh one N A. Uh, like she said from Billy Boy, you've got cars pulling out into traffic. If it's clear, let's say you want to go back southbound. You see this all the time in the bigger cities, but they got enough room. They pull into turning lane, waiting for a break in the traffic. Well, if you've got all these cars in the turning lane facing one another, how many accidents you going to have there? What are you going to save? What are you actually going to accomplish by doing this? Nothing. Put a turn signal in West Nineteenth and a turn signal at War Eagle, that takes care of the issue. Is this thing really broke? Is Riverside Boulevard really broke?
Well, and that's.
I'd like an answer to that.
And, and Keith, that's what we tried addressing at the last meeting. Because that's one of the struggles that I, I have when I think about this, is, you know, we have, have heard that if it isn't broke, don't fix it, right?
Bingo.
And, and that's an easy way to say it. That's an easy way to say it.
What other way is there to say? I'd like to know who's brilliant idea it was to do this.
Can I finish? Let me finish, Keith. So, but what, what the problem is, is that it is broke. Is because if you look at, see, and I'm a big fan of statistics, right? Like, people can say, gosh, I've lived there. I travel that road every day. I never see an accident. I've never seen an accident on there. So what I do is I don't live there, right? So I want to rely on statistics. I need to know, are there actual accidents? And the fact of the matter is, it is way over this average for the state of Iowa and the national average, correct?
Yes.
So the amount of accidents happening on there are way more than any national average or state average. And so what, what I then do is look at statistics and talk and rely on the Iowa D O T to tell me, how would we make that road safer for our citizens? And this is what they're doing. This is what other communities have done.
You really honestly think in your own mind that it's going to make it safer? Think about it.
I'm watching, I look at statistics.
Think about what people are saying or trying to tell you guys.
Because you don't have.
It's not going to be safer.
And that's where you go to different communities that have this and implemented it and said that it is much safer.
Alex, you can't compare that. You go up to Forty-first Street, Sioux Falls, it works, but you know what?
That's. That's five lanes.
You've got two lanes going each way, too.
But you have a protected turn lane.
You cannot ta, you cannot compare.
I know.
You cannot compare. Forget about the comparison. You know, I drive around Sioux City a lot. You know, I've seen more accidents on the Vets Bridge than I have on Riverside Boulevard. Now, that's a fact. Look it up sometime. You talk about statistics? Check in on it sometime.
Okay.
Now, how come there isn't a turning lane up there? Whose idea was this to change from four lane to three lane?
It was a recommendation made by the Iowa DOT because they looked at our standards of our accidents and said that it's way higher than the national average, so they were looking out for the residents of Riverside and the residents of Sioux City.
You know, me and some residents out there have been talking lately, it's been quite some time since we've had a wreck on West 19th and Riverside Boulevard. I think people are learning to drive safer through that area. It is a lot, it's been a lot safer.
And I understand...
So you can't take stats. I don't believe in statistics at all. I, I'm not that kind of guy. I have to see it.
Okay. I understand.
I don't believe it.
And that's where we, and that's where we had the numbers, they were on a slide in the last meeting.
Okay, the numbers.
And it showed how every single year they were increasing.
How many years are you talking about? You could take one year, let's say 15 accidents, but yet over a 10-year period...
I think, I think it showed over the last four or five years.
You might have only had 25 accidents.
Dick, Dick can give you the exact numbers, though.
Yeah, um, Dakin Schultz, Iowa DOT, transportation planner, District 3, Sioux City, Iowa, 2800 Gordon Drive. As far as the accidents, the 2012 to 2016, we had 83. So that was that five-year period. 2013 to 2017, it was 94. Then from 2014 to 2018, that five-year period went to 107, and we just got the 19 numbers. And, uh, 2015 to 2019 is 114, so...
Now, that's the total of all them years, right?
Yeah.
By, each five-year band. So the 83 is for the five years, 2012 to 2016. So then the 2013 to 2017, you drop off the 12, add the 17, year 17, and went up to 94. So what's, what's showing is there's a growth every year in the number of accidents out on Riverside Boulevard.
Now, why don't you guys try and experiment? Instead of messing up everything, why don't you try to put turn signals at those two critical intersections and see if that works? Before you mess the whole thing up.
It's not gonna work because...
I know it's not, Bob.
But, no, the reason, I, listen, I...
But it's a better solution than what they're coming up with.
I probably bored you today, but you're not listening to me, okay? Not gonna work because the turning lane timeframe will back traffic up. You got to, you've got to have, it, it just doesn't work. Turning arrows take up too much of what you need for through traffic, guys, that's the problem.
And you really think this is gonna work?
I just said I'm probably with you if you're listening, Keith, okay? I just said that.
I know where you stand on this, Bob.
Okay, so, but the turning deal that you guys are talking about will not work. I understand what they're saying there.
Okay.
And they're right.
If you, if they go with this plan, which they probably already have in their mind, they're going to, why don't you...
Well, they can't go unless these guys vote that way.
Why don't you leave an opt-out on this? If it doesn't work...
We are.
And Keith, that's what they're doing.
If it doesn't work, go back to the work.
That's what they're doing.
How long are they gonna give?
They said two years.
Two years. 24 months.
I'd say give it six months.
That's very short.
And then get your state trucks ready with the, with the sanders on it to sand all these lines off you guys are gonna paint on there. You're gonna have so many arrows and so many yellow lines, people aren't gonna know where to go anyway.
I have way more faith in humanity than you, Keith, I guess.
No, I don't think so.
All right, let's give somebody else a chance to talk.
I just, I have a question.
Thank you, Keith.
Just for everyone who is here to speak against it. Does everyone understand what was stated about why the turn arrows will not work? I just want, that's, that's the key here. That's the key. Because if we stop traffic so that we can turn left, you can't go straight. And no one behind me can go straight that wants to go straight. If we're in two rows and we're all headed north, now I want to go west. The people behind me that still want to go north cannot go north because they're backed up behind me, right? Same thing going this way. We can't make them both happen at the same time, so now we have to sit and wait for the south people who want to go east. So just so we know that that won't work for that reason. It'll make people sit there and wait.
You know how many cars are gonna use that turning lane to pass cars who wait at the intersection? Probably quite a few. So what are you gaining there? You're gaining more accidents right there.
No, it's not more accidents.
You watch.
You, you're gaining a lot of wait time.
Mark my word. And that's the thing is, we will watch.
Mark my word.
Yes, we're willing to watch.
That's the whole thing.
Yep, and that's why we want to be able to remove the...
All right, Dave, let's give somebody else a chance to talk here.
All right.
But did, did you, what did you...
You know where everybody stands that live out there. I guess we should know because we live there. These guys don't, they, they don't have a clue.
Keith, the numbers, the numbers that Dakin just shared represent from 12 to 19, 2012 to 19, if I, my math is correct, a 37% increase in traffic accidents. Isn't that worth trying to do something that provides a safer environment for cars to travel?
Yeah, but you're talking about a lot of semis involved, too. Not only cars, you've got a lot of truck traffic.
I know there's a lot of truck traffic out there.
Floyd with Transit, Hamilton. You've got a lot of semis going up and down there, too. Remember that.
Which is exactly why I don't want any semis ramming into a car. That's all the reason we want to improve safety.
Get the car out of the way.
Okay, okay, then, if you guys do all this, who's responsible for the person that, uh, gets killed out there?
Are you guys?
Okay.
Not any more than any other road that we build, unfortunately, no. More, you had a question.
David, what, what did you call it, though, if, if you let the entire lane go, whether they take a left?
Split phasing.
What?
Split phase.
You could do split.
You could do a split phasing, but that's very inefficient.
But it folds everybody up.
Yep.
Yes.
It would be more of a delay than losing the lane.
And then, just one comment that keeps coming back to me, and, and maybe I'm wrong, I hope I'm wrong on this, but it, it's a little bit frustrating to me because we never hear about the accidents on our roads until, like, this type of event comes up. Now, maybe we've had reports in the past, but I sure don't recall somebody saying, "Look at the number of accidents we're having on Riverside Boulevard, we've got a problem." That's, it frustrates me. And I'm not blaming you or anybody, I'm just saying, we don't hear about it. So how, because I like statistics, too, but then we don't really use them in a way maybe that we should be, so that we could say early on, "We've got a problem on Riverside Boulevard, we have a problem on Floyd, we have a problem wherever it might be."
Well, I, I, you know, and when I was going through some of the information I was, I was working to put together, I looked at some of the crash rates on our roads, and the scary part is, is a lot of our roads are above the statewide average. And, but do we just accept that because they're above the, that, we have other roads above the statewide average, that we just continue on that? That's, the hard part is, is I think a good amount of our roads have crash rates higher than...
Yeah, it sounds like...
It's not, we have some of the highest insurance rates in the state of Iowa. Maybe it had more to do with drivers and the way we drive than roads.
I mean, it just sounds like an educational process, that's all I'm saying.
We can do something to help to...
Yep. That's what I was gonna say, is they literally are trying to give us an answer to improve safety.
Leon Husk, 3400 Alberta. I don't live in Riverside, but I travel out there quite a bit. Number one, you're wrong. People in Sioux City do not understand a third lane. Go set at Stone and Gordon Drive and try getting in, going up the hill there towards Maple, and have people setting in the travel lane to get into Casey's. It's a third lane. Casey's, the Gordon Drive and Stone.
Yeah.
It's a three-lane deal there. Actually, four lane because you got a right turn lane for southbound. But they tell, they pull in, they won't pull into that center lane to turn. And I had it happen to me on the way here this afternoon, I was coming across Fairmont, and there's a pickup setting in the through lane on Fairmont, turning left, not in the left turn lane. People do not understand left turn lanes in Sioux City, I'm sorry. And I've seen it on Transit, too, where they're setting in the travel lane, making a left turn. You talk about Transit, I've seen that.
I'm trying to remember that intersection in that roadway, but...
Right across from Stonebrew.
No, I know, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, 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 I'm just trying to remember the la, lane configuration.
Yeah, I think it's more of a turn bay than a...
I was gonna say, it's a, I, yeah, I didn't think it was...
It's three-lane all the way up to Witt.
Gotcha.
And they'll do the same thing at Witt. I have to go that way twice a day right now because you guys closed 14th and Cedar. But, uh, I have to go that way twice a day.
So you're saying that people are not utilizing the middle...
They don't use the three lane, the third lane, that center lane, the turning lane. Evidently, they don't understand it. Another thing is, coming down, the lady just mentioned the trains on Military and, uh, Highway 12. You get traffic backed up there, people turning on right or any of those, they're gonna have to wait a long time because you've got single file now instead of double file coming out of there.
But they can't turn into the center lane anyway legally.
They, no.
They're supposed to stay in the right turn lane.
Right now, it's four lanes.
No, I understand that, but if you have two going one direction and I'm turning right, I'm supposed to stay in right lane.
No, not right, left. If you're going north on Riverside Boulevard and they're coming south from the train clearing, you can't turn because they, it's gonna be single file. It's gonna be one lane of traffic, solid traffic. You aren't gonna get it. And now, one other thing, why is the state spending all this money to widen Interstate 29 and they're gonna narrow Highway 12? It doesn't make any sense.
Riverside...
Highway 12 is Riverside Boulevard.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, one thing I've always found, I don't care if it's automotive engineers, state engineers, building engineers, whatever, the one thing they lack is common sense. And I'm sorry, but that's, they've got a box that they put everything into and they can't use common sense. Thank you.
Okay, anyone want to speak in favor of the three-lane? I think we've got a good feeling about the, the not.
Hi. Bob Desmetz, 6005 Pine View.
Hi, Bob.
And I am speaking in favor of the change. I've been out there and, and obviously, the proposal from DOT includes bike lanes. That's not driving the project, but it's a, a great opportunity of a byproduct and also solves a lot of problems, some problems we have in Sioux City and our reputation and stigma statewide of not having any. But I've been out there on my bicycle a lot, I've been out there in a car a lot, too, but, and the four, you know, Riverside Boulevard with the four-lane configuration just lends itself to speeding. There is, you know, there's no question that there's a lot of speeding out there. I think at the last presentation here at the council, I believe DOT also talked not only about a number of accidents, but severity being higher than average. And a three-lane would naturally slow down traffic some, and I think it would be a safer thing for our cities, so, thank you.
Bob?
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, you, we had a good visit, and, and I agree with some of the points that you're making, but just overall with bike lanes, I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need to start marking bike lanes somewhere, anywhere in the city. We don't have, do we, how many do we have now?
Zero.
Zero.
It just...
We don't have a block.
Yeah, and we need to start, but we're also working hopefully on, on a master plan for, for bike lanes. Anything I can do to help in that regard?
No, I appreciate that, and as I've mentioned, you know, we, we've actually done some research with League of American Cyclists. We're the largest city in the country without any bike lanes, from what we can tell.
Well, and we were recently named the most...
That gives us an, an image of progressiveness that's not good.
And what was it, their last two years, we were named the most dangerous city for bike cyclists?
Yeah, and we are. I had an opportunity to take the Director of RagBri and Director of Iowa Bike Coalition on a tour of our trails a year and a half ago when they were here for Parks meeting, and they said they couldn't believe how bike unfriendly our downtown area is, for example, compared to all of the other cities that they have meetings like this in in Iowa, so...
Can't argue that.
It, it is a concern for our reputation, but specifically Riverside Boulevard, I do think it would be safer, I think some of the speakers, people in Sioux City are not used to bike lanes, so they have exaggerated concern about them. They're not as used to three-lane. We don't have a lot of three-lane streets in Sioux City, but I think they do work well where they are, so...
The only thing, the only reserve, one reservation I have is that might not be the place you'd want to start with teaching people about bike lanes.
Oh, Highway 12, yeah.
I've had a few close calls myself, but...
Two weeks ago, I was down here, I, at Riverside Boulevard, and I asked one question to Mr. Scott, who was repairing the curbs? Has that been decided?
Yes, we, uh, went out and looked at the curbs. There was some discussion that I was unaware of prior, that the curbs would be addressed, and they will be looking at. Now, you won't have full curb height because we can't adjust the curb height.
No, I understand that.
So, but the curbs will be repaired, and we've done an inventory of what's broken out there.
Who's, who's fixing the...
That's the, that's, it's a city financial responsibility, we're on the curbs.
So who's fixing the inlets on the drains, then?
That's being, that's part of the project.
That's being done, too. Now, I'd like to answer this gentleman over here. He has put a bike trail in along the Big Sioux. Those people was out to Riverside United Methodist Church roughly four years ago when they talked about that bike trail, they needed it there. Now they need Riverside Boulevard besides. There's not that many bike trails. That bike trail's beautiful. Goes down along the Big Sioux, car around the River Drive, all the way up to Military Road and go north Sioux. Ride it. I don't know why they need one on the Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What was his address?
He lives on, he just said Riverside Boulevard is all he said.
Riverside Boulevard.
1619, okay, thank you.
He was here a couple weeks ago.
Right, I, I just didn't catch it.
Good evening, Kitty Bach. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Kitty Bach, I'm President of Sioux Land Cyclists. My address is 27756 K-49 Lamar's. In reference to what was said about bike lanes, I do appreciate the fact that you all want everyone safe, but I also want to let you know, I don't even, I am not a resident of Sioux City, but yet I can say for a fact, I've ridden the Dyke Trail at least once a week throughout the summer. Any, actually, from the spring to, what, October, November. But when I do that, there are times that I need to access businesses along Riverside Boulevard. Now, regardless of whether or not Iowa DOT's recommendation is adhered to, which we didn't push for it, but if yours is adhered to, that would give some bicycle access along Riverside Boulevard, protected access. Now granted, you know, regardless of whether or not it's adhered to, I'm gonna ride Riverside Boulevard to access those, um, businesses. I think that all cyclists would agree that we welcome any improvement to the cycling community recreation trails within Sioux City limits. recreation trails within Sioux City limits. So we do appreciate the Dyke Trail and we do use it. So I just want our voice to be heard that we encourage the bike trails and lanes, whatever is deemed safest for the community.
And that's one of the struggles I have is, you can tell me I'm not telling the truth, but I am telling the truth. Bike trails were not part of this. Absolutely were not, and all of a sudden to sell this three lane, bike trails become an important and integral part of this process. That's what bothers me. If bike trails, and they are Bob, I'm not saying they're not important, but if they were so important to our city, then they should have been part of, because I asked the question, are we gonna paint bikes along there, are we gonna make it, people understand? And the answer was no, but now all of a sudden, man, they're, they're an important part of this project. That really irritates. I, well, I can, I can- Well, I mean, I've talked to you about it too, Dak, can I ask you? I know, I know, Bob. And the answer was no, we don't do that kind of stuff.
We, and we typically don't. In the instance of this case, that was one of the things that was stressed by the city that it was important that if we were gonna look at something like a three lane on Riverside, we should incorporate bike lanes. We normally would like them a little wider. It is five feet, right at five feet to the front of curb with the restriping that's being proposed if it goes forward. That's the other thing I do want to point out. Either way, we are going to do a resurface project on Iowa 12 or Riverside Boulevard. So, you know, our, our concern wasn't that, or we weren't using the, the resurfacing as a way to try and force you into something that you didn't want to do.
No, I know you're doing that, but I'm just saying, it wasn't enough, but now all of a sudden it's important, and so, you know, when, those of us that may not be for your project as proposed are looking like really bad to the biking community that was never even supposed to be here today. That's what bothers the heck out of me.
Well, and I'll say, Dak, and I remember having meetings with you at Simcoe, I probably talked to Dak about this the first time he ever brought it up to me. You know what I mean? You remember that? In Simcoe, in the meeting, I said, if it's, if it's being proposed, that in the light of safety, that we were going, you were going to make a recommendation of three lanes, I would like to see bike lanes there, because what I was saying is if I owned a pub, or if I owned Billy Boys, and I was at Riverside Park, or, I mean, I've even went with friends biking to where, or where they're rollerblading or anything like that, where I'll be down and we'll go, we'll start at the riverfront over by Hilton, go the whole distance. By the time we get to the park, to Riverside Park, I really could, hey, use a beer. I really could maybe grab a burger or something like that. I'm not gonna take the Dyke Trail to get to there. And so what I was saying, Bob, Mayor, to your point, is I remember the first time Dak brought it up. I said, I think that would be a great way to expand and get the people that are biking and utilizing Riverside Park, which is beautiful, to be able to go to those businesses. I remember, I pushed you on it, and your response in that meeting and your response almost the whole way has been, that's not something we do, that's not something we do, we're not gonna be doing that, we're not doing that. And I kept pushing. And now, the city is coming around finally to think that we need some bike lanes in this community and we have an opportunity where if we're doing it in the name of safety, there's an opportunity.
We also now have a complete streets policy that was act, that went active the 1st of January where we will do evaluations whenever we have these types of projects. So-
State does?
Yep, yep.
May I interject?
And, oh, I'm sorry.
As a byproduct, I mean, this would, bike trail, bike lanes might be a byproduct of this project. And as you said earlier, that Sioux City is the most dangerous city of this size in the United States for cyclists. And if we make it more bike friendly, or at least start to try to get to that point, and you are doing that, okay, you're adding trails every year, but we've got a long way to go. And if this is one way to add to the bike friendly community, you're gonna be bringing a lot of younger people into the community as they start to see Sioux City grow in a cycling, a recreational town, city.
Fourteen years I left the council, not one trail, not one dime, Bob, was spent on trails. Fourteen years. So the cycling community should maybe say, you know what, you've made up for that in the last eight years around here, and, and we're trying, and I've been a proponent for how long of striping Jackson Street and some of those main arteries, we've never gotten to that point. So I've been supportive of a lot of that stuff, but, you know, I, I can't be responsible for fourteen years of nothing happening in this community.
And I want to say-
We started trails when I was here before, and the minute I got back, we started picking them up again, as you're all aware. But this one just still bothers me, the way the whole thing happened, it just-
We definitely appreciate all of, all of the progress you've made. We, we post pictures of ourselves on the trails every week. Please, please like us on Facebook and you see, can see all those pictures. And we even say, hey, thanks for the new trails. So we do greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. The council has been proactive, I think, in that regard. I, I do think a master plan will really serve a great deal. Just to Mr. Waters' point about extending from the trails, how do you do that? How do you do that the right way? And that's where I think a master plan and-
Yeah.
And we're gonna work on that, Bob, and move forward with it.
Can I speak again?
Yeah, well.
Mr. Schultz just brought this up. Why did he put this in? Is it so he'd bring the biking people into it to put the argument up?
No, he said it changed-
That's what it seems like.
No, it- Policy change, I understand that, if the policy changed, the policy changed, I get that. It, it isn't that, and I think you also, three weeks ago, we talked about if you, if you do stripe it or you paint or what, you'll do that, but then the city is on its own for maintaining it.
So, for the mark.
For the, I don't think it's that at all.
First my courtesy, right?
I, I really don't think it's that.
That's what it seems like, that just sitting here, that's what it appears.
Well, I'm sorry that, yeah, I'm sorry it does appear that way to you, but it's, but it isn't, from everything-
And I've got another question, Mr. Schultz, on his traffic counts and on the accidents. Can you give us a breakdown on where the accidents happened?
Um, yeah, we can run something. I don't have them with me.
That would make more sense to see where the accidents are happening. If they're happening up from 19th North, work on that area. Don't mess with the rest of it. And if you put biking trail, bike lanes in at 45 mile an hour down across Riverside Boulevard in front of the park and the swim pool, I'm looking for kids to get hurt. If nothing else, rocks off flying, flying off tires and stuff like that.
You know, in concept, you, you raise a good point, but I don't think you can do part three lane and part-
No.
Uh, four lane. I, I think it's either, it's either all three lane or it's all four lane, I, I believe.
And, I mean, I, I don't know exactly how to say this, but we don't, I mean, we really don't have any opportunities other than something like this to improve safety along there. We were gonna do the resurfacing anyway, this looks like a good opportunity to do this. We can't go in, we don't have a police force, we don't do those types of things. This is the, one of our few opportunities to try and prove safety. It wouldn't be so concerning if the numbers keep going up yearly, you know, sometimes you see a spike and then it goes back down, but this is a gradual growth in that, in that accident rate. One of the things we've talked about, and this is something that we mentioned to Dave tonight, and I know Dave brought it up, is we'll do a evaluation, a 24-month evaluation on this. So once the project's complete, we'll look at travel time survey, for those that are concerned about the travel times along there. We'll also, we'll continually look at the accidents. I mean, it's tough during a construction project to get a good gauge on accidents, so that one, even though we'll maintain them, but then we'll have an evaluation of the, the accident rate following the completion of the project. So, the other thing, the 19th Street, we don't have a right turn lane in there, and part of that is because of the need for right of way in there, there's also utility relocation that would need to occur there. So that's a little bit longer process, but that's something we can evaluate as well.
Dak, and I, I think the mayor brought it up also previously, but there are other ways to, to enforce, do an enforcement for speed and, and for traffic flow and, and traffic slowing. And I think you even made the remark, when the, when the state patrol gets out there, people really pay attention, but we also have our police cars out there using it and-
Well, we do, we don't have anything to do with the state patrol, it's a different-
No, I, no, I understand, when they're out there, it, it makes a difference. There are, there are options to-
Yep, yeah, enforcement certainly is-
Traffic calming.
Probably one of the best options. The issue becomes, you know, how often do you patrol it, and, you know, so, got other needs around.
Dak, you've said the crash has gone up considerably, consistently. How much has the traffic gone up?
Uh, it actually was going down and then we saw a slight increase. So, it was, it saw a gradual decline, I don't know if you remember what it was, but we're, we're right now, we're back to about, I want to say the, the draft was about 7,800 vehicles a day.
And how's that compared to back in 2012?
Well, we, um, I, I don't, you have the, yeah.
Shane Timkowitz, the Iowa Department of Transportation. Timkowitz is T-Y-M-K-O-W-I-C-Z.
Like, just like it sounds.
Yeah. Good Irish name.
A little bit. So, we do traffic counts every four years throughout the state. So this last one, 2019-
Oh, yeah.
Is not the final, they go through an adjustment, but as Dak said, about 7,000. We were right at 7,000 back in 2015, we were close to 10,000 in the pre-count before that, so 2011. So there was a substantial decrease in the traffic counts we saw between that 2011, 2015 count that was out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I think everybody, well-
Michelle, maybe not.
We can beat this horse, I think everybody's made up their mind of where they're gonna vote, so I don't know that we want to keep beating the horse, so.
I'll try to go fast then.
That's fine.
Michelle Bossenellis, I'm the Executive Director at Simcoe, 1122 Pierce Street. This project is consistent with the, the NPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Long Range Transportation Plan for Safety. The NPO supports projects that minimize the occurrence and the potential crashes that may result in loss of life, health, or property. And we give priority consideration to those, those projects that, that do support safety. And so that, that's kind of the number one thing, looking at this, it definitely fits within the, the long range transportation plan. In terms of the bike lane, I guess I just want to make a few remarks on that. I think we're looking at it as just an extra amenity that could be added to this project. I think it's really great that while we're looking at reconstruction projects, that we're looking at, well, what are the other types of transportation do we use on, on these corridors? Is it pedestrians, is it bikes? And how can we get those to fit in and how can we do it safely? Because I think 15 years ago when I started at Simcoe, we didn't even, we would just build roads and not really consider bikes or pedestrians. So the fact that we're evolving to the, to the point that we're talking about a reconstruction project and how can we look at other modes, I think is great movement for our city, for the whole area, because we're, we're evolving and we're looking at that. So, so mostly safety, but I'll throw in that with the bike lane too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Michelle.
I'm gonna call for the question. I think we, I think everybody's pretty well have an opinion, so.
Keith.
No, Keith, we're gonna, we're gonna vote.
No, 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 just real quick. Okay, you left a two-year option open on if the project's gonna go away. Are you guys gonna keep an eye on this? If the accidents rates goes up on this-
Absolutely, we are.
Are you gonna shut this thing off sooner than the two years?
It probably will not get shut sooner than two years. Could probably tell you that.
Two years is a pretty quick turnaround, but yeah, we'll monitor it.
I would guess.
I hope so, guys, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Something to think about?
I agree.
I tell you what, I would just say one last thing, I, I think you understand where I'm coming from, but I would just urge all of you, just to think how difficult it is to sit up in these seats and try to make these calls. You know what I mean? I respect the heck out of all of you. You took a lot of time, you know, that's some of you coming back, you know what I mean? You came here a couple of weeks ago and you came back, and I respect each and every one of you, especially your opinions, you live there. I don't live there. You know what I mean? I do travel out there quite a bit, I try to get out there as much as possible, but it's tough making these decisions. It's not something, I mean, come on, like, I never wanted to hold public office before and I saw an opportunity to give back to a community, right? But then you try to make decisions that maybe are unpopular, but you're doing it because you're trying to move your community forward or hope that it's gonna improve, right? You, you hope that you're going to improve that area, you're gonna make it safer, you're gonna make it more friendly. And, and honestly, I try to listen to some public opinion, I want to take, I have friends, Norma May is a friend of mine, I want to listen to what you all have to say, but if we have an opportunity to improve safety and even better, right, even better say it doesn't go well, they're gonna come back in two years and be able to change it. We don't have that opportunity on many roadways, you know what I mean? To be able to fix it if it was wrong. And so I hope you understand that with my vote here today, I'm trying to do the right thing to improve safety, to be thinking about the citizens that are out there that travel it every day, just like every one of you, and if it doesn't work, then you can come up here, you can say, Alex, see, we told you, you didn't listen, and then we'll say, fine, we're going back and we're changing it back because you were right. So I hope you understand.
I wish you were.
Keith, I know, man, you're here more regularly, I appreciate it. I just wanted you to know how it's, how it is coming from at least this seat.
I'd like to thank the Iowa DOT for the presentation they gave three weeks ago. It was real professional, it was very straightforward, and it, it was one of the best presentations I've seen. And those of you that were here three weeks ago and saw that, I would hope that you would agree with me. It was very straightforward and, and above board, so thank you. And thank you for DOT for resurfacing, because that will cause us to look at the curbs, it's gonna cost, cause us, more importantly, to look at the drainage system on Riverside Boulevard, because it's desperately needed. That's, that's for certain. To the Boy Scouts in the back, I just want to let you know, as a council member up here, that this kind of discussion is what the city needs, it's what the city wants. You just saw the pros and cons of a very important issue to everyone in the community. And so I hope you learn that if you're gonna take civics or take government classes, this is the way it operates. And sometimes it gets a little heated, but that's because people believe in what they're saying. So I hope when you grow up and you learn in scouts, believe what you, believe in what you do and stand up for what you think is right and voice your opinion. You can never be wrong voicing an opinion. Go quickly, because we're voting here.
Okay, um, my name is Donald Schinkie, D-O-N-A-L-D, S-C-H-I-N-K-E. I live at 114 South Glass, and my concern is for the enforcement of the, of the traffic laws. It doesn't seem like we have any here. I'll give you a four, my-
21,000, 21,300 and some citations left.
Well, that's not enough.
Tell that to the 21,000.
I'll give you, that's still not enough.
Okay, okay.
I was driving north on Lewis and, uh, Lewis Boulevard and 75, and I was at 11th and Lewis Boulevard, right next to the Casey's Gas Station there. I was the second car back from the signal light, and so the, the light turned green, I was going north, the car went forward, I was following, I had a car and a half length in front of me. Here comes this red car on the left, he turned right over me and slammed all these brakes and then he turned into the, turned into the Casey's store. That's one of them. When you come from Gordon Drive, you're going west and you hit the bottom of the Gordon Drive IDOC, the traffic there are coming off 75 and turning up and around to go west on Gordon Drive, and they don't bother to stop, they don't bother to look. And I mean, I drive by there two or three times a day and it's the same thing. If I can get over in the left-hand lane, that's fine, but a lot of the times I can't get over in the left-hand lane.
I experienced it myself, sir, I don't know what to tell you, other than we've added two traffic officers in the last couple of years in defense of the police department, and then this is not trashing anybody, it's just reality is, we have a lot of officers that are in the military, and so they backfill as well as they can to make sure that the priorities of making sure if you get your house broke into or there's a murder, that they get to that first, and unfortunately, traffic is second. But we've added two traffic safety officers in the last couple of years, so, we, you know, and-
Well, that's not enough.
Well, it, then you, then come back for the budget hearing next week, because the problem is, it takes a tax increase, and guess what? Nobody wants one of those.
Well, we're, we'll talk about that in a minute, but-
Okay.
Also, the speeding in this town is terrible.
That's what they're trying to address with this, so.
But it is, the speeding is terrible. You go Gordon Drive, or you take like down between Jackson and Virginia Street, there's the parking on the right hand going east, there's the parking on the right-hand side and on the left-hand side you're supposed to be driving. Well, they driving right down through the parking thing. Only they change their mind when there's a car parked in the parking zone.
Okay.
Now, you want a law enforcement center, but you're gonna lay it on the taxpayers, right?
That is a county, that's next door.
But I mean, that's gonna be-
Don't holler at us about it.
That's where that's gonna be laid on. Well, what they need to do is they need to start laying out tickets for those people that are lawbreakers.
Okay.
And get the money, get the money for the extra people, the extra officers they need. You're gonna do a new law enforcement center and you're gonna need more help there.
That's not our deal.
Well, it may not be your deal, but you should think about it.
Well, we do think about it, trust me.
And you should put some pressure on them if pressure can be, be addressed.
Okay, appreciate that.
I didn't know that you had to come here to be certified for the Daytona or the Indianapolis 500.
I appreciate that.
Is Sioux City?
I mean, that's the only way you get it. You come here and you stay here for a while, and then you can get your certification to do that.
Okay. All right.
But I just gave you a few examples, there's more examples that I have that happened to me. But that, it's gotta be addressed.
It happens to all of us, sir, I understand that.
But you gotta get some money for this and not lay it all on the taxpayers for that, that, for that new law enforcement center. I know they need a new law enforcement.
Again, sir, that's the county, we're not doing a new.
Right, but it costs the taxpayers a million and a quarter, to a million and a half dollars to run that, that law enforcement center every year.
It does. But the county is making those decisions, not the city.
You guys are going to go in cahoots with them for a new law enforcement.
No, we're not, we're only helping them with the process, we are not in cahoots, we have nothing to do with the budget, we have nothing to do with how many people are there, we have nothing to do with the color of the brick.
And also, I can say, that red light cameras and meter maids do not, they help the budget, but they do not balance the budget.
Okay, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, I, I call for the question, that means discussion stops, sorry.
There's citizen concerns at the end, if you have something you want to add, though.
When you call for the question? Come on up. That's what you call for the question for, that's Robert's Rule of Order, I hate to tell you that, but that's what it is.
But I said citizen concern at the end of the meeting.
I should say, as a cyclist, I've had cars intentionally drive at me, swerve at me, throw things at me, tailgate me. I feel that we need protective bike lanes, that's all I got to say, really.
Thank you.
We need them, and we need more education for the motor in public. This is a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My screen went black. My screen went black. Oh, it woke up. It was sleeping. You have to vote, though. Hmm? Yeah.
It passes three to two. Moore and Scott, vote no. Citizen concerns.
I promise this has nothing to do with the bikes.
Name and address, please.
I do ask that I could give that later, and the reason for it is this, it's to protect my daughter's identity, if at all possible. Not of you may not know, but a few years ago, DHS changed a law, and that law is that.
Guys, we can't, we can't hear up here, okay?
In the event of a sexual assault of a child versus a child, DHS does not get involved, law enforcement does. Unfortunately, the local law enforcement is not properly trained on how to deal with this. My daughter was sexually assaulted in November. The child is still going to school with my daughter. I've dealt with the school district, dealt with the school. After this, I'm heading over to the school board meeting, which is at six o'clock, to also address this issue. There needs to be some sort of education for our police department to expedite these processes, because the school districts are relying on our law enforcement in order to proceed with sexual assault allegations. Three months of my child now pulled out of school because she couldn't handle going back to school anymore and seeing this child, is having to now not get an education, or face the predator. This needs to get addressed with law enforcement, and it needs to be a priority of law enforcement, because three months is far too long. That's all I got to say.
Can you, can you, Lisa, can you meet with him?
I sure will.
But Lisa's the captain of the police department, can you meet with her out in a private area?
But it's almost six o'clock, so you might want to just, because she can give you her card as well, or follow up.
You don't want to miss the school board.
Anyone else?
School board meeting that he wants to attend.
Mr. Gradkin.
No, sir.
Julie.
No concerns.
I thought your phone went dead.
Yeah, exactly, laptop, laptop. The only thing I would say, that I forgot to say in my final plea with the citizens and talking to them, was, and it was kind of along what Dan was saying, the Iowa DOT gentlemen have left, but I wanted to thank engineering for putting together those numbers. I really appreciate that very much, because, like I said, I don't drive out there all the time, I rely on statistics, I rely on recommendations, and with everything we asked for, to my knowledge, everything I asked for was provided, and I thought you did a great job with at least making a recommendation based on the facts and the figures, and putting it in our hands, which is, at the end of the day, what you need to do. And so I know that people don't agree with facts sometimes, and I, I understand that we have it at a national level, and it appears we have that at a local level, so I think that we just need to continue to work together, and I really appreciate all the work that I know you guys put into this project as well, and the recommendations. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
I have nothing further, Mayor.
Move with your second.
Moore?
Aye.
Chainer? Aye. Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gradkin?
Aye.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hey, Jenny.